Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'm here in the restroom.
Oh, okay. Cool. You have a good trip?
Yeah, yeah, it's been good.
Good.
It's a good one.
Hi.
What did you get here yesterday, last night?
Um, we got it on Saturday, like, you know, it was just family stuff and that kind of thing.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we're flying out, flying out from our house Friday night. And then...
Oh, my God. I'm sorry, I was so busy. I'm 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 so busy. Kids are crazy when they're at home. I've seen your mom and daddy give lemon bars because I gave her lemon last week. And I ate, uh, I ate half of the drink by myself.
It's just my...
So that is the last thing.
Well, they're getting some Senate votes out.
Yeah.
Show my picture with Tim King.
Right. It's actually...
I see all the guns. All this time.
I'm trying to find the picture. He might keep up. Peter, concerns about her?
I just built the tour. And that's it. It's absolutely...
Up to the front. You're in the top row.
All right, here we are at 6:30. Going to go ahead and reconvene from closed session. I am not seeing, let's see where we're at here. We have invocation led by trustee Lang. And then we have our pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchekert. So please rise.
It's hard to believe that it's been over 55 years since Dr. King gave perhaps his most famous speech at the Lincoln Memorial in our nation's capital. Dr. King's speech expressed his disappointment about the lack of progress from Lincoln's time until then in fulfilling the promises of freedom of all citizens as contained in the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. Yet, he held fast to his dream that one day, freedom will ring for one and all. Obviously, we're still a very divided nation that seems to be in some respects even further from realizing the potential envisioned by Dr. King and expressed by our founding fathers. Let us not lose hope that the dream can still become a reality someday and rededicate ourselves to speaking with rather than at each other and accomplish the great potential that has always been our heritage. Thank you.
Please join me in plective allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any, oh, I'm sorry, we're moving ahead here. So next we have the administration, the oath of office for trustee Milchekert. She has a special guest today to do that oath of office, her own son. So if you want to go on down there to the podium and we'll take care of that.
Maybe right there? Right there.
Good evening. I'll keep this brief, but my name's Daniel.
I'm sorry, you have a microphone over there to the other side.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, great. It's my absolute honor that I'm here with you today to swear in my mother, Marcia Milchekert, to her 32nd year as a member of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees. I'm not sure how many of you know this, but 32 years ago, the teachers of Irvine Valley and Saddleback College approached my mother and recruited her to run for this position despite the fact that she had no political experience. And they saw in her the dedication to public service and the courage to do what was right, not just for the teachers, but for the students, the administration, the constituents, and the community at large. And it was that courage and dedication to making these schools the premier community colleges in the state of California which has kept the voters coming back for more and more. So, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Marcia Milchekert...
I, Marcia Milchekert...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of the California...
And the Constitution of the state of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
And Constitution of the state of California...
And the Constitution of the state of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any, any, any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, I want to take this opportunity to announce to everyone today that I am not running for president of the United States. But, but I am honored and proud and a bit humbled to have the magnificent opportunity to serve for another four years in a district with the two community colleges that are about, about the best community colleges in the state and, yes, in, in the nation. I've never run for another office because this is exactly where I choose to serve. I once again pledge that to constantly strive to ensure a first-rate education to our over 60,000 students that we serve with distinction every year. I'm also honored and thrilled to have my son, Daniel, swear me in. I, he thought he was going to have an opportunity to swear at me and that's why he drove down to LA, from LA. Daniel's been a criminal defense attorney and a public defender in Los Angeles for over 15 years. He's an exceptional advocate for his clients. He does criminal defense and appellate work. He has honed his skills with extensive experience in the courtroom and he also honed his courtroom experience because of his experience acting in several musical theater productions at Saddleback College. Thank you, Daniel, and thank you to all of my colleagues on the board, our administration, our professors, and our staff, and the people in my community college district. Thank you so much.
Did, did, did you have anybody else in the audience you liked to thank?
Yes, I'd also like to, besides my husband, I'd like to, besides my son, Daniel, besides my husband, here, take my husband, please. No, no. I'd like to introduce my husband, Dr. Benjamin Milchekert. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I do not see any requests for public comment, so we'll move on to board reports. We'll start off, I think I started to the right last time, so I'll go down to trustee Witt, please.
Thank you and Happy New Year to all of you. And we're starting, can you imagine 2019? Where did 18 go? This year, my goal is to live each day. I don't want in 2020 say, where did 19 go? I'm going to try to remember it all and, and just enjoy it to the fullest. And the word I said here is enjoy. Sometimes I get too serious and I hope all of you take the same route, enjoy it. I did attend a few of the, the professional development meetings and the one that I have to say, I really got a lot out of. I felt like faculty again. And that was the one that our vice president of instruction, she put together cooperative interaction, cooperative learning, where we talked about how we, as faculty, could make a difference in what's going on. And I want to say thank you to the part-timers. I doubt if there are any part-timers here, but I want all of us to, when you see them in the hallway, thank them for being participative in our college because I do believe that they are part of the pillars at this, at this college and at IVC. We couldn't do it without them. I'm not going to go into all the things that I did, but I appreciated the new year and I appreciated the staff that organized the professional development. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Milchekert.
Thanks. And for our enormous viewing audience out there, I'll explain this. Prior to classes beginning every fall and spring semester, there's a professional development week. During this week, the college presidents, administrators, presidents of the academic senate, and the faculty association take time to address their faculty. There are many educational and informative meetings presented by administrators and faculty for the faculty. I always love to attend as many of these meetings as I can because I learn so much from them. It reinforces from me the wonderful programs we have at our colleges. Our classes are taught by, taught by top-notch, innovative, and caring professors. Our students are incredibly intelligent to have chosen Saddleback or Irvine Valley College for their colleges. Saddleback College math professor, Deanna Valdez, chaired Saddleback College's professional development week. And IVC's English professor, Dan Droule, chaired IVC's program. If you missed it, the link to the Greek, the Geek Report will be posted on the Flex Week page of Saddleback College's website by the end of this week and, and later on at IVC's website. Well, you'll see the president's opening session there. IVC's president, Glenn Rockmore,'s opening session dealt with free speech and safety on campus. Michelle Deutschman, the executive director of UC Center for Free Speech at UCI, discussed the increased polarization that we're seeing in the students today. Two panels, first primarily local police officers, discussed the progress of the installation of door locks at IVC. The second panel was primarily IVC staff. And Keith Shackelford, dean of athletics, talked about the behavioral intervention team, or BIT, at IVC and recommended Erwin Shimerinsky and Howard Gilman's book, Free Speech on Campus, which I immediately bought, bought because I'm actually friends with both of them. At Saddleback Part-Time Faculty Recognition Dinner, I think trustee, trustee Witt already talked about this, so I won't talk about that. My, my time just ran out. But I have to mention, at IVC's Classified Senate Breakfast, Maria Nunez created a fabulous board game at that meeting. The purpose was to teach all of the classified staff how important they are in student retention, how important every one of them are in student retention. And this concept is so important, I was delighted to see Maria taking such an active role in promoting this. We have an incredible classified staff as well. So I attended meetings all week and found it was a marvelous way to learn firsthand what innovations and practices are being implemented at both of our incredible colleges. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
This is the first time in 24 years that I haven't been able to attend any sessions of, in service, and I missed it. I, I had some minor surgery, so I couldn't, I could not go, but I just wanted you to know, I was thinking about going, but I, I couldn't because I, I was having surgery at that time. I did attend one event at IVC, and that was the basketball game between Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College. It was a good game. Most of the game, Saddleback was leading, but IVC won 51 to 47. So I congratulate IVC. I just wanted to point out that a couple of things have happened with our state budget. Governor Newsom has taken some, has made some expenditures, or he's, he's, he's advocating for some expenditures for the 2019, 2020 budget. One is a second year of free tuition to first-time full-time students, another local college promise strategies. Second, to increase award amounts and expansion of Cal grants. A third thing, a buy-down of K through 14 pers and stirs rate increase. And finally, ongoing increase of funding to formula rates. I also wanted to congratulate and thank Anna Marie Gabel for her, she sent out a, a letter talking about the state budget and what Saddleback is going to get and also what IVC is going to get. And the last thing I wanted to just mention very briefly is that I, I wanted to applaud the chancellor and the two presidents for their presence reports, or for the chancellor's report and the two presidents for their reports. So they were very well done.
All right. Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. First, welcome back, everyone, spring semester. Second, I would like to welcome Dr. Elliot Stern as the new president of Saddleback College. I've already had a chance to see Elliot in action, took a photo with him, tweeted it out, and also attended his welcome reception here on campus. And I just want to say this to Elliot. I'm very pleased that you're with us at the helm of Saddleback College. Saddleback, like IVC, is an excellent educational institution, but certainly not without challenges needing leadership and creativity to maintain its excellence. And I believe you are the right person to do this. I also attended the part-time faculty dinner at Saddleback College, as has been noted, I think on many occasions, and at the dinner, so eloquently by trustee Witt, our part-time faculty are vital to what we do and they comprise a, a majority of our actual, our, our faculty here on both campuses. I also attended the Greater Irvine Chamber of Commerce's Business Outlook Breakfast. Thank you, IVC, for inviting me to attend that. I appreciate that. And finally, tonight, as trustee Lang noted, we have a rare Tuesday board meeting. We don't do this very often. And that's because yesterday was the Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday. So in his honor and addressing a subject that is increasingly on my mind at least, I want to close the report quoting Dr. King, my report, quoting Dr. King. And I quote, "All we say to America is, be true to what you said on paper. If I lived in China, or even Russia, or any totalitarian country, maybe I could understand the denial of certain basic First Amendment privileges." Because they hadn't committed themselves to that over there. But somewhere I read the freedom of assembly, somewhere I read freedom of speech, somewhere I read freedom of the press, and somewhere I read the greatness of America is the right to protest for right." End quote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I got to attend the swearing-in of the new police chief of Tustin on January 9th, and that was a, a nice affair to be a part of. I thanked the city for inviting me to that. As well as January 14th, the welcome reception for Elliot Stern. That was very nice and he had some nice words to say to everyone there, and we appreciate that. So good luck and already hitting the ground running. And then I'm looking forward to this weekend, speaking at the Astoria Interventions Convention at IVC. And we'll see about the next basketball game, see how that comes out. All right, that's all I have. Trustee Jay's report is going to be read by trustee Lang.
Correct. Trustee Jay is under strict doctor's orders to give her vocal cords a rest tonight, so I have the privilege of delivering her report and also imceding to her any additional time that we'll need to get through the report. She was a very busy trustee during this, since the last board meeting. Welcome to an exciting new year 2019 at South Orange County Community College District. We have much to be grateful for. Welcome to our new Saddleback College president, Dr. Stern, Dr. Elliot Stern. These are exciting times and trustee Jay looks, as do all of us, look forward to working with Dr. Stern, with our new chancellor, Dr. Kathleen Burke, and with the outstanding students, faculty, staff, and administration of the district in Saddleback and Irvine Valley Colleges. Trustee Jay was pleased to have the opportunity to attend the Professional Development Week, January 8th to 11th, and she derived great pleasure from seeing the enthusiasm on the part of all the participants. On Monday, January 14th, trustee Jay attended the welcoming reception for Dr. Stern and could barely get into the room. There was such a feeling of excitement and anticipation. She finally got up the nerve and pushed her way through the crowd to meet Dr. Stern. The reception was wonderful, was a wonderful introduction to the college, to Dr. Stern and of Dr. Stern to the college. Since the last board meeting, trustee Jay has attended numerous college and district events and has been impressed by the richness of the activities put on by the faculty, staff, and students of our community. On December 18th, 2018, trustee Jay attended the Saddleback Emeritus Corral's concert, the most wonderful time of the year given at the Laguna Hills Community Center. John Huntington once again conducted a wonderful concert that really put you in the spirit of the season. The attendance was such that the center was packed and additional seating had to be brought in. On Tuesday, January 8th, trustee Jay attended the IVC president's breakfast where the topic was campus safety and free speech in focus. The keynote speaker was Michelle Deutschman, executive director of the UC National Center for Free Speech and Civic Engagement. In addition to the keynote address, there were two panels, Trends in Safety on College Campuses and Safety, Resources, Processes, and Procedures at IVC. The event moderator was Dan Droule. Lunch was served after the panel discussions. On the evening of the president's breakfast, January 8th, at Saddleback College, trustee Jay attended the Faculty Social Part-Time Recognition Dinner where the contributions of part-time faculty were recognized and presentations were made to highlight the important information on college resources. On Wednesday, January 9th, trustee Jay attended the Student Success College-Wide Kickoff Meeting at Saddleback College. It was presented by Kerry Goulding and Penny Scaff. It's gratifying to see such dedicated staff working with students to assure their success. Also on January 9th, trustee Jay attended the Combined Saddleback College and IVC Faculty Association Meeting and Luncheon. Louis Long gave a presentation on the new faculty contract in preparation for ratification by the faculty. Louis gave a great presentation and he answered many questions. Following day, January 10th, trustee Jay attended a meeting on supporting students with mental health disabilities. This was an excellent presentation with three students talking about their issues regarding mental health and attending classes at Saddleback. It was obviously a busy and eventful time during which trustee Jay continued to be pleased and gratified with the dedication of our students, faculty, and staff. Thank you, trustee Jay.
Okay, trustee Lang.
I have no report. You've heard quite enough from me already.
Nice. Student trustee Hong.
Hi, everyone. So the semester's been starting off really great, and I've had the pleasure of taking classes with both Professor McLaughlin and Professor Meyer. My other update is, along with Matt, who isn't here tonight, we both made homecoming court, which is an amazing scholarship and leadership opportunity at IVC. So that's really exciting. On Monday, January 14th, I was introduced to Amric Jo Hall, who is now our interim director of student life over at IVC, and he has a really extensive history of representing and helping students, so I'm really excited to work with him. Earlier today, I met with trustee Prendergast to talk about the initiatives that I'd like to begin this semester. And over the break, I realized that, you know, it's my last term, it's my last time that I'm going to be here to work with these people, and I really want to make an impact on this school. So due to an article that trustee Ling actually sent me from a Yale-bound student who was a student trustee in her past, she started this caucus, or more of a committee basically, where on each campus that she had, she took student representatives from, you know, pride scholars, undocumented students, international students, and she had about 12 groups, and essentially, she picked these student leaders and once a month, or a couple times a month, she would meet with them and ask them, you know, what's going on? Because for me, I tried to do the monthly forums, but that wasn't really working because that was just me reaching out to students. But this way, I can directly, you know, interact with these communities and ask them what's going on and really try to help them. As for my other update, the student trustee caucus that I started earlier this year with the California Student Senate, that's still going, and we realized that we needed to focus our first couple of years of, or our first couple of months of development. So we chose our first, our first focus as, where is it? Oh, educating students on political activism and educating students about their students' rights that they're entitled to. So that's, those have been my big projects this semester.
All right, excellent. Next, we have the chancellor's report.
Well, I also attended a number of the events at both colleges for opening week. I won't go over all of them because you've heard quite a bit already. But I would like to thank the faculty, staff, and administrators that worked on putting those together because they really were excellent events. I would also like to welcome Dr. Elliot Stern to the district and to Saddleback College. I look forward to working with you more closely than we have in this last week as you get used to the college. And I'm looking forward to spending this weekend with trustee Jay, trustee Jamal, and trustee Milchekert in Sacramento advocating on behalf of the district and the colleges.
Excellent. Next, we have college presidents' reports. Going to make the new guy go first?
Actually, I'm going to have Dr. Stern start first in honor of beginning.
All right, thank you for that honor. First, I, in the future, I will have more to say about the college that will be about the college and not about my own personal experiences with the college. But this time, I would like to acknowledge for all of you and in public, what an amazing group of employees. I have been honored with supporting in the job that you have bestowed upon me. In the last week, I have been shown welcomed like never before in my life. I have made connections to people who have shown me what the secret sauce is in our completion rates and our transfer rates. It is warmth, it is an ability to create a sense of belonging for our students and even for our new president, and I'm very grateful for that. I also want to express gratitude to Dr. Jim Bice for handing over this gem so carefully and in such good shape through his leadership as interim president. I am, I am very grateful for that and grateful that he's helping us transition to our new VP of Administrative Services in the next couple of months. And I just want to acknowledge for trustee Wright that Dr. Bice actually prepared the president's report, so he gets the thanks for that as well. So thank you all. We'll talk more in the future. I hope to be bringing you some data about the college when we talk about it. The data that I would bring you today is not such great data. It is that our enrollment is down another 2% to 3%, both in heads and in credit hours earned, and that is of some concern to me that renews in all of us, I know, the sense of urgency that we need to address this problem with. So that'll be very high on the priority list as, as we go forward in the coming weeks and months. Thank you all.
All right, so I would like to say thank you to doctor, or welcome Dr. Stern and look forward to working with you in the future here. So I have a reminder here or a save the date, I hope you'll take notice of. There's a traveling exhibit from the Simon Wiesenthal Center Museum of Tolerance. And we're going to be hosting that at Irvine Valley College, be on March 11th, with the reception beginning at 6:00 PM. So all of you will receive invitation to that. I believe it's going to be at the college for about a week, so folks can filter through that. Should be very, very important for us in regard to remembering the Holocaust. Then, very proud to say that one of the premier campus safety events, it's called the National Campus Safety Summit, will be held in February 26th through 27th in Las Vegas. And I'm proud to say that our very own chief is going to be on a panel at that event. And some of his colleagues come from the University of Houston, Cal State University Fullerton, Georgia's Community College, Miami University, and the University of Southern California. So we're very proud of John Meyer for that accomplishment and his contributions and the fact that he played a major role in the president's opening session, as well as my two esteemed colleagues here, June and Kurt, had a role in helping formulate the ideas for that. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we only have ASG president from Saddleback. Oh, you're just sitting in the wrong place. IVC, okay.
Is it working now?
There you go.
Sorry. So I'm just going to go over a couple of events that we have replying to host in the near future. And so first up is tomorrow, we are having the ASG and Student Equity Showcase. It will be a welcome back event showcasing the various departments of our student life and student government, including all the committees we have both inside ASG and the different groups of student life. We will be in the campus's main quad, a booth representing each committee and department, and we'll be providing information on, on all the resources we offer. And it will also serve as a community service opportunity for, for the homecoming court candidates to instill the values of campus involvement and cooperation. Next, and in the next event we will be hosting is Club Day. We'll be hosting a second Club Day this semester to increase club exposure on campus to students. And our ASG inter-club and co-curricular council have been tasked with preparing and fostering the event. And we're hoping it'll incite a particip, growing participation across the campus in our co-curricular activities. And then we'll also have homecoming, which, which will be our second annual homecoming. The last year's homecoming is a huge success. It'll be on February 8th in the gym, and we are looking forward to a fun and festive celebration of the campus community. celebration of the campus community. The 10 homecoming court candidates have been selected based on their involvement in the extracurricular activities that we've been hosting so far, sound academic standing in their service to the campus and the surrounding community. Rather than a king or queen selection, the two top, the top two selected candidates will constitute this year's homecoming royalty regardless of their gender. The official royalty crowning will take place on February 12th during the halftime of IVC's Women's Basketball Game, with activities for the crowd to take part in as well, and that is all I have to report on.
Thank you very much for standing in. Okay, so at this point, we have our presentation. Looks like we have our Federal Legislative and Advocacy Overview from Capital Advocacy Partners. Real quick, though, we were supposedly having someone from Senator Pat Bates's office, not here yet? Okay, thank you. All right, it's all yours.
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you for the opportunity to come back and visit with you again. It is our continued honor at Capital Advocacy Partners to represent the interests of the district and the colleges in Washington, DC. We, we appreciate the opportunity and the continued trust from Chancellor Burke, the college presidents, the Board of Trustees, and the dedicated staff. We are your voice and your messenger in Washington, DC. As, as, oh, thank you. As, as, and let me just take one minute to introduce, everyone knows me, Dana DeBeaumont. Amanda Fenton is, is my partner and tag team that we work closely together, and Kristen Lamell just joined us this, this month, and so we're, we're a girl power team, and, and growing. So, what our job is to work with Congress, the administration, and the federal agencies, and, and help be your messenger to open the programs, to share your expertise and, and the fine work that you're doing, and learn about the priorities so that we can help you reach your objectives. We research programs, we understand the requirements of the programs and agency priorities, we troubleshoot issues, and, and we work with the program managers from the different grants to really position the colleges for success when they go to compete and in other initiatives. And, and we work with, to build congressional support. This is a little bit interesting now, as, as we have a new Orange County delegation, and that presents us with a really unique opportunity as they're all new members to help really support them and help shape and help them reach objectives in higher education. We, our goal is to plan ahead, to fill college priorities and identify new issues, such as support for mental health services, advanced technology programs, apprenticeships, student support services, CTE, and in-demand fields. So, we really are down there engaging. People don't, just don't see us once a year or twice a year. We're constantly talking to them and building rapport. We don't do one-offs. That's not what we're about. And so, and we also work with legislation and regulations. We draft and recommend legislative positions and languages. We track legislation and let you know, and we position you as a resource and, and an expert for, for what's going forward. Go ahead. I, I want to be faster. So, some of the things, you have a report in front of you, as well as a detailed synopsis of some of the items that we worked on in the last year, but we, we've touched on the HEA reauthorization, which is, is still a work in progress, legislative language and advocacy support for student veterans issues. We're, we're really helping to coordinate and lead outreach and support for Medi-Cal reimbursement, to help to get our colleges reimbursed for mental health services, outreach on CTE and workforce development. We've worked on the Dreamers issue, mobile health clinic professional development appropriations, and Annapese, and we're really working to position Saddleback College to get a waiver for a strengthening institutions program for the Hispanic-serving institution program, if that's what they desire to, to still get. It's one of those flexible grant programs that IVC has in Annapese, which you really can use the money for what you want, including construction. I'll just touch base, things are a bit of a standstill now with the government shutdown. Anyone who tells you they know what's going to happen isn't being honest with you. It's, it's pure chaos in DC. We, today supposedly McConnell said he would bring two bills to the floor, one dealing with President Trump's compromise, and the other is a three-week CR to keep government, reopen government till February 8th. The rumor is both are going to fail in the Senate, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. I'll let Amanda talk about looking ahead.
Thank you, and I wanted to highlight four things on here that are going to be hot issues for this coming year. The first is on the administration standpoint. We've got continued regulatory review going on this year. Something to remember about the regulatory review process is that is solely controlled within the department, so that doesn't depend on Senate or House approval, which means it's actually likely to reach the finish line, right? So, when we think about initiatives that will have a definite impact on the district, regulatory review, which will focus mostly on the accreditation process and different types of transfer and accreditation capabilities. The second thing I want to focus on is for the congressional side, as Dana mentioned, we do have a new delegation here in Orange County. This provides really a wonderful opportunity for us to help shape what their voices around higher education, particularly with that higher education reauthorization coming up. That's the third thing that I want to focus on. So, we're going to have a higher education reauthorization debate again this year. The Prosper Act, which was the House Act previously, which the district was opposed to, that's effectively dead at this point because the House leadership has changed. So, what we'll have is a renewed debate in the House, hearings, et cetera, on what that reauthorization should look like. We've always expected the action on this to really take place in the Senate, so that's where we're likely to see what the ultimate policy driver will be, is what the Senate compromise is. Senator Alexander, who is the Chair of the Help Committee in the Senate, he's announced that he's retiring in 2020, so he has an added incentive to get this done in the next two years. So, we might actually see some HEA reauthorization. Again, the regulatory review process will reach the finish line, so that's something that we definitely need to stay involved in. The last thing on the targeted funding opportunities that I do want to bring up is, they've been slow to come out, the shutdown has been impacting that, the federal register is essentially frozen, so while we at first celebrated because the Department of Education's budget was on time this year, it's been stalled again because of the regulatory review process. So, we are anticipating another crunch time on solicitations, grant applications, and comment periods, so that's something for us to keep in mind as we move into the spring.
Thank you very much. I met with you guys before the meeting, and a lot of my questions were answered then, so thank you for that. Does anybody else have any questions? I have to switch to my screen here, and I have a request to speak from Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. Dana and Amanda, welcome. Nice to see you guys again, and I know I'm going to see you on February 7th in Washington, DC, so I look forward to that. A couple of questions, generally, you mentioned something near and dear to my heart, which I had heartburn about when Congress passed it and the President signed it, was, was the tax increase on, on many California constituents via the, the Federal Tax Reform Act, including a significant number of constituents, our constituents, including myself, have, are going to have their taxes significantly raised because of the loss of the SALT deduction. And you mentioned that in your presentation, so my question is, is there any chance in you-know-what that the restoration of the full SALT deduction is, gets to the President's desk?
It's possible. There is going to be a, a tax 2.0 bill. It was already been reintroduced in the House by the New York lawmakers, the New Jersey lawmakers have did a press conference about it before. The issue will definitely pass the House, the issue is the Senate, but in compromise, and if they're going to get some sort of a tax bill, it could be one of those bargaining chips, so it's not impossible, but it's, it's, it's tough, there's, there's, it's been a high-profile issue, so I think it's possible. It's not a guarantee, but it's going to be one of those things, and we should definitely voice our opinions on it again and ask our members to cosponsor it.
Well, I had asked our former Congresswoman to oppose it, and obviously, she didn't listen to me on that one.
Well, she, she did oppose it. Well, she voted, but she, she did work a little bit behind the scenes. Actually, she, she tried, but she was in, in leadership, so she was, you know.
Nice try.
She did.
Okay. She's not in office anymore, so.
She did as much as someone in leadership was going to do.
Yeah, but bottom line, it has been reintroduced. There's a possibility that it will be taken up as a bargaining chip. Right now, it needs some more cosponsors, so we are not holding our breath at this moment, but it does have bipartisan introduction right now.
Yeah, and, and this, and the session just started, and everything is solely focused on the shutdown and trying to reopen government. Nothing else is happening, and, and we'll see if even of the State of the Union, what happens next week, we don't know.
Okay, so I had a couple of other questions. One is earmarks. Now, I know that there's been a ban or prohibition on earmarks for many years, and you've, you've included them, a reference to the earmarks in there, so what's the status of earmarks now?
Well, it's possible, too, that, there was.
Do you want to explain to people what earmarks are?
Yeah, an earmark is a line item spending that devotes a project without having to compete for federal dollars. Earmarks typically are about $100,000 to $300,000, and there is wide belief that they're coming back. And there are some forms of soft earmarks that were included last year, they were just more soft and like program-oriented. The general consensus is that they will come back, and I would have thought they would already have made these decisions, but with the government shutdown, everything's up for grabs, and I would be shocked if there was anything more than a CR for the rest of the year, given how late we are right now. And if there is a CR, there will, there won't, the earmarks would be for FY19, so the, the session coming up. FY20, yeah, the session coming up. So, I, we're going to prepare and submit requests, just like we did last year, because we think it's prudent to do, so because if they open up, they're going to open up like that, and if you're not there, you're not going to have that opportunity, and I think it's maybe a 50/50 shot, and if not this year, my money's in the mix.
Well, you guys are optimistic on SALT, you're optimistic on earmarks. Wow, all right, let's, let's hope, let's hope it happens.
Well, I want to call that optimistic. I would say that, that things are changing, and, and I think Congress really gave away a lot of their power by giving away earmarks, and people, all members, it's just how to go back.
Well, I totally agree with you. I think the, the, when, when Congress gave away its ability to earmark money for their districts, it then granted ironically during the Obama administration, the Republican Congress emboldened and empowered the Democratic administration with more power and more money. So, they surrendered their ability to do so, which was very strange to me.
And in all candor, the money has actually worked well, because it didn't cut any money out of the federal budget, it just put it different places, and the district has been very effective in winning grants.
Right. So, my last question, I want to monopolize time, is on the issue of apprenticeships, and, which is, in some other work that I do, I'm very involved with some apprenticeship work, and I, and I think, I'm curious, because there is a lot of activity taking place on apprenticeships within the USDL, DOL, Department of Labor, how can we better position our colleges to take advantage of what's happening in the area of apprenticeships?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So, two things to keep in mind. So, the first thing is that the Department of Labor has gone ahead and awarded some apprenticeship funds, but they haven't done any new competitions, so they've been essentially awarding continuation grants, what we call continuation grants, to the existing groups and agencies that they work with, so they haven't really opened up new competitions. One of the common themes of where they want to go with the competitions when they open up, as well as the existing continuation awards, is the business partnership component, and what we're seeing, and this is one of the things that we recommended when following the Apprenticeship Task Force and a couple of other, of other components, is regional and national industry groups as a prime and very important partner for those apprenticeships initiatives, because what they're looking for is a job placement guarantee of some kind, so you know, it's a soft guarantee, but a guarantee. So, when we think about how to best position the college for that, industry-first partnerships, so thinking about what is it that our businesses need here, what types of national, as well as regional, trade groups can we get involved, and how can we look at it as an industry-first standpoint?
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Seeing no other requests to speak, you are released. Thank you so much.
Okay, and I just want to add, thank you for coming to DC and letting us know when we're going to schedule those meetings. It is, and, and I've already, we've already talked to a couple other people, but if you're coming to DC, even if you can only give us an hour, please do so. Terry's been to DC, and, and it, it just, you, your voice and the voice of people that work on behalf of the district are, are, they can't be replaced by us. I mean, we're there and we're really good at what we do, but we aren't you. So, I encourage you to, to come and, and just make that time, and, and we promise to make it worthwhile and you feel like it was a good use of your time. And if you have any questions with anything federal, reach out to us, because we're, we work for you.
All right, thank you very much, again. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and ask to move up 5.2, so that our representative, Rhonda, representative from Officer, or of the Office of State Senator Patricia Bates, Rhonda Reardon is here to present a resolution to the board. This is item 5.2.
Let's see, which of these am I doing? Doing this one? Is that better?
Perfect.
Better, great. So, thank you, President Prendergast, and you are newly re-elected, is that right? So, Senator Bates welcomes, says thank you for going after a reelection. She won hers as well, it was a good thing, and that was wonderful to hear. Thank you, Vice President Jamal, for asking those questions. So, and all of you trustees, I know some of you, so thank you very much for letting me come. Sorry I was late, I had to be at the Mission View City Council, they had some awards that had to be given that Senator Bates was going to be presenting. So, I just need to tell you a little bit, most of the time when resolutions are presented, the, they are requested by somebody for someone or some entity, and we get the requests in our office. There are people up in Sacramento that actually do the resolutions, all the warehouses and that, and this time, Senator Bates took it upon herself to ask for a resolution. I never saw it until it came, arrived in her office, but she wanted it for Saddleback College, for your workforce program, your strong workforce program. So, I'm going to, this is not a long resolution, I'm not going to say the warehouses, but I am going to read it, because I want you all to hear it, I think it's very important. As a side note, I am a product of the community college system. I went to LA Valley College many years ago, when I lived in the San Fernando Valley. Thank God that I moved to Orange County, and also attended Saddleback College when Tech, I think it was in the 80s, when we first started with Tech WordStar and before, I know, all of these young people in here have no idea. Let me tell you, you don't need to know. And I said, I am not using this, this is cumbersome, and I am better, I can do it better if I just write it or even type it anyhow, but I want to say that I, I am a big advocate on behalf of, especially Saddleback, but the community college system. I think that people get the best education, especially in, for their first two years, and it is the least expensive, and they get taught by like real people who have actually done the work, they know what they're talking about, they're adults, and it's not a bunch of TAs that are letting the other guys go and do their research. So, send them to me if you have any problems, okay? On behalf of Senator Bates, I'm going to read this to you. The California community colleges, community colleges serve 2.1 million. two point one million students throughout the state of California. And its one hundred and fifteen colleges are dedicated to improving social mobility for Californians and fueling the state's economy. The California Community Colleges has spearheaded an unprecedented effort to provide more and better career education, also known as career technical education, to create one million more middle-skill workers, thereby producing a job-ready workforce for employers and lifting low-wage workers into living wage jobs. This collaborative effort is known as the Strong Workforce Program, an annual recurring investment of two hundred million dollars to spur career education in the California Community Colleges system, which is the nation's largest workforce development system. A skilled and flexible workforce is key to a strong workforce, advancing business performance and supporting California's economic competitive, competitive advantage. And the essential components of a strong workforce include jobs that enable citizens' social mobility with a substantial increase in earnings and attainment of a living wage. Through its registered nursing program, Saddleback College has proven to advance its students' social mobility by supporting graduates who made gains in attaining a living wage. And its efforts have earned the institution the designation of Gold Strong Workforce Star. So now, therefore, be it resolved by Senator Patricia C. Bates that she recognizes and commends Saddleback College for its outstanding contributions to the state of California's workforce efforts through the Strong Workforce Stars Program, applauds the institution for its invaluable contributions it has made to the intellectual and social growth of its students, and extends best, best wishes for its continued success in the future. Signed, this dated this day, the fourth of October nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, Patricia C. Bates, thirty-sixth Senatorial District. There you go, ladies and gentlemen. So I just wanna say thank you so much. You have done such a remarkable job, all of you, um, on this board. Several of you have been on there for a while. Thank you, because you have made, you have made this college a place not just for people to think about it, that it's the thirteenth and fourteenth year of high school, but you have changed it into, really, a place where they can come and earn certificates and really come out of here with really good jobs. So, thank you very much, on behalf of Senator Bates.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll come down there in just a second. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion to vote on this, and then to accept it.
And you might not consent to it.
Can I, can I say a few words now?
Well, after, okay, so I have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Milchker, and a comment from Trustee Jamal. While he is speaking, I'll come on down there.
So I just, first of all, uh, I don't wanna make you hold that too long. That looks really heavy.
Oh, that's all right.
But, um, first of all, thank you to Senator Bates. Uh, she has been an excellent senator. And I say this, um, from someone, um, I am an independent voter. Um, I have been since I moved to California, actually, most of my life. And, and, and Senator Bates, um, does an excellent job. Um, I really appreciate what she's done. And then something about Rhonda. Rhonda is an exceptional staffer for, uh, the, uh, State Senator Bates. She was a city council member in Mission Viejo and did an excellent job in that capacity. And, uh, we're, we're lucky to have you as an advocate for not only Senator, but for the constituents here and for us. And thank you for all that you do as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So congratulations, we accept it.
I'm so glad to tell her that. Was it unanimous? Just saying unanimous, okay.
I don't know, I, I was teetering.
Yeah, really, I think you were, and probably Jim was too, and I know Marcia was.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you.
All right, very, very good. Uh, so at this point, um, I'll solicit any other polls from the consent calendar. Consider that one taken care of.
Five, five point seven.
Sorry. Okay, five point seven. Any others? All right, see, now I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
It was still on five point two, I can clear it.
All right, so, have a motion from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Witt for the balance of the consent calendar. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee vote as a yes as well. All right, so with that, we'll look at five point seven. Saddleback College and IVC speakers.
There's just a correction that I wanna, wanna make note of. It has the date here for the first presentation of three, uh, dash eight, dash twenty-five oh nineteen. That five probably should not be there.
Yeah, I see it right there on page.
The five shouldn't be there.
The five should not be there.
Page one of one.
Instead of two oh nine.
Yeah, it should be two thousand and nineteen.
Good catch. Made it go. All right, so with that, we have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Lang to approve five point seven as amended or corrected. Uh, seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on to, uh, six point one, CCT Board of Directors nominations. This is an opportunity to represent our district or try and have a representative from our district on the state community college trustee board. I have a request to speak from Trustee Lang.
I just wanted to inquire whether the other, whether any of the other board members were interested in, um, putting their name in nomination.
Thank you for asking.
You know, I tried it before. I have, I have been informed that I might get a little more assistance, um, in, in my campaign.
Don't look at me.
If you wanna try it again.
Staff assistants.
So if they're willing to put in the effort, I am, I am willing to try again.
I will make the motion that we support trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, it'd be good to have a member on the board.
Okay, um, so I guess we have a motion from trustee Witt coming from trustee Lang's vocal cords. And a second from trustee Wright nominating myself, uh, for the CCT Board of Directors. Do I have any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, I guess I have to abstain. And should. All right. Uh, unanimous trustee yes from six trustees and abstention from trustee Prendergast and a student advisory vote that just disappeared, but I think it was a yes. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see if I can do you proud. Okay, next we have six point two. Grant award Saddleback College collaborative research. NSF include. I have a motion from trustee Jamal and a second from trustee Wright. Do I see any requests to speak? Make her the motion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
No, all right.
Except it.
Go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point three, agreement for software development services, Nudessic LLC. I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Witt. Uh, I believe we got information from, uh, Vice Chancellor Bermuda by email. Do you wanna share any of that with the public?
The question was regarding item number six about AB seven oh five. That legislation requires multiple measures to be used when evaluating students for remedial education. And this project will, uh, make sure that those multiple measures are included for the students and thus compliant with AB seven oh five.
And I asked the question, I was the one who asked it, and I was pleased to see that that tool is in there. So let's hope, hope it works well.
Perfect, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee vote for a yes. All right, next we have six point four, budget calendar fiscal year two thousand and nineteen twenty. The motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point five, renew apartments, assumption of lease and release and related stopple certificate for new lessee. I have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Witt. No requests to speak. Go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point six, board policy revision for review and study. Uh, I do have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Lang. We do have a change on board policy three zero zero six. Uh, the first one on the list. Uh, you should have all received the change on your, on the dais. I will read out the change for the public if they have the old agenda. Um, in the second, uh, new paragraph, after well-being of the community, uh, we've crossed out from as well, all the way to the broader community, and added, "Using the college campuses as a living laboratory, students, faculty, and staff will develop environmental sustainability, knowledge, and skills, promote a deeper understanding of sustainability, and create interdisciplinary connections between college and district operations, the academic experience of students, and the broader community." So with that, do I, I have trustee Jamal request to speak?
Yes, I just wanna thank Chancellor Gable, I mean Chancellor Burke and Vice Chancellor Gable for working on finessing this language. Um, I had made a comment about it, and I think it's, content-wise, it's almost identical to what it was before. I think it just reads a little better, and thank you for making the edits to the, uh, board policy.
Okay, you're already on a great start for your new committee. Okay, uh, trustee Milchker requests to speak.
The question I have is just, I know the Board Subcommittee on Board Policies is starting tomorrow. And this is, um, for review and study. Are they going to be looking at, at this particular policy? Or are they looking at the new policies that they're, um, coming down the pike?
Um, I will defer to trustee Jamal to answer that, since he's on that committee.
Say the question again?
Uh, your, your, your committee is starting tomorrow. Are you gonna be looking at the, the, uh, policies, like six point six, that are on today's agenda for review and study?
No, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be looking at the policies that are on today's agenda, no.
Okay, okay. We asked for review and study. The next one is for, uh, uh, for acceptance, so, so.
I imagine as we dictated for that committee, their first order of business will be to kinda organize their plan of attack as to what they wanna look at.
Well, partially, and we are gonna look at certain policies. And then, and then it goes through a process. Um, I think Chancellor, back to, to you and to,
What goes to, to the B Park Committee?
B Park, and then back to this board. So there's multiple checkpoints on the way.
Yeah, perfect, all right.
Thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak, we'll go ahead and approve for review and study. We'll go ahead and vote to approve for review and study. I won't tell you how to vote.
You can if you want.
Can, I guess I just did. All right, we have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote as well. Six point seven, these are board policies that have already been reviewed and studied and are now for board passage. I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright and a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
So, um, I support this, uh, these board policies for, uh, passage and approval. The one policy that I think needs some closer scrutiny, and I think it's going to get it, is the one on diversity and inclusion, which I, I, I am very supportive of. But my, um, comment on that particular board policy as it stands is that it's a, it's quite vague and could probably use some closer scrutiny, um, really in terms of what do, what do we want to achieve out of diversity and inclusion? How do we define it? And then ultimately, perhaps, something to look at is how do we measure it? And I don't know if Vice Chancellor Viscounte Chilwell wanted to say anything.
So, um, the board will take up this board policy tonight, and then I talked to trustee Jamal. I think it's best to have this particular policy put back. We're reconstituting the Equal Employment Opportunity Equity and Inclusion Committee that's in accordance with the EO Plan for the district that was signed in two thousand and seventeen and put in play. That committee is, we're getting ready to reconstitute that committee. And I told trustee Jamal, I think that committee would be the best committee to look at this policy and bring something back to B Park.
And Chancellor Burke.
So the policy already exists. It was being, coming forward to you with actually very small changes. So, we're gonna pull it from this agenda tonight and not approve it?
No, they were gonna approve it, and then it can be looked at.
And then refer it back, okay.
All right. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. A unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point eight, academic employee and classification administration personnel actions. I have a list here to read.
Board President, before you read that list, there are two corrections that we've provided to the board and the public tonight on the two contracts. The first contract change for Dr. Jim Bice, who's also in the audience, was just the title. It should have been, and currently was changed to, "The Correct Title Interim Vice President of, for College Administrative Services." That was on page one of seventeen. That's been corrected. And the second correction is for, uh, Dean Christina Hinkel's contract. She is also in the audience tonight. The two changes to her contract were the corrected title, Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences. And then the other change happens on page four of ele, of seventeen. Though Dean Hinkel was previously employed in the district, she was not tenured within the district. So that change in the middle paragraph on page four of eleven just says that Ms. Hinkel has not previously acquired tenure in the district. So that change was made on the contract.
Okay, so I read these all the way down the line here?
Yes, please.
Awesome. All right, position number one, interim vice president of College Administrative Services, employee named Dr. James Bice. Contract dates February first, two thousand and nineteen, to February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Range and step twenty-five dash eight. Annual salary, two hundred and forty-one thousand, one sixteen. Monthly allowances, transportation, six twenty-five. Cell phone, one sixty-five, internet, one hundred. Number two, position Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences. Employee name Christina Hinkel. Contract dates January first, two thousand and nineteen, through January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Range and step twenty-two and four. Annual salary, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. Monthly allowance, transportation, two fifty. Cell phone, one sixty-five. Position three, acting assistant dean of Health Sciences and Human Services and Director of Nursing. Employee Barbara Huggins. Contract dates January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Range and step twenty and four. Annual salary, one fifty-five, four twenty-four. Monthly allowances, transportation, one twenty-five. Cell phone, one sixty-five. Monthly allowances, transportation 125, cellphone 165. Position number four. Athletics Director slash Assistant Dean of Kinesiology and Athletics. Employee name Randy Totorp. Contract dates January 28th, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Range and step 20 and 4. Annual salary 155, 424. Transportation 125, cellphone 165. Administrator contract extensions. We have position one, Director of Research Planning and Accreditation. Employee name Loris Fagoli. Contract dates July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Range and step 19 and 4. Annual salary 151,704. Monthly allowances, transportation 125, cellphone 165. And then of course, the other information in the item is up for vote. We have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Lang and a request to speak from trustee Milchker. Now I need a drink of water.
Okay, good job with all those names. I just want to thank vice chancellor Viscachill for answering all my questions on this item. I had about a gazillion questions, so you really answered them and thank you so much. And I just wanted to point out that professor, math professor Richard Zucker is on here as retiring, as a math professor from Irvine Valley College after 40 years. And president Rockmore and I were at his retirement party during in-service week and he, he did a lot of magic tricks with his math students. He was very, very good at getting students over math anxiety and he made math fun for kids. And there was a magician at the party, he was right at IVC in one of the classrooms and it was a fun party. So wanted to point out that he's retiring and, but I think he, he'll be back teaching one class when he's legally allowed to do that. So thanks.
Alright, very good. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. A unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Alright, moving on to 6.9 Faculty Conversion to Canvas. One-time stipends. A motion from. A motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Milchker. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, we have six trustee yes vote, one trustee no vote and a student trustee yes vote. Okay, moving on to 6.10 Classified Personnel Actions. Any changes?
There are no changes.
No changes. Trustee Jamal is the motion and second is trustee Milchker. Seeing no requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.11 Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Action. Motion from trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Jay. Any thing with this?
No changes.
Okay. No requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.12 2020 Bonded Sabbatical Recommendations.
Board President, there is a change on this. We were notified yesterday by the co-chair of the committee, Tony Huntley, that there was one that was recorded incorrectly. So on your page 6.10, the face sheet, under the status section, it should be four applicants requested for the full academic year sabbatical leave. Three applicants requested sabbatical leave for fall 2019. One remains the same for requested sabbatical leave for spring semester 2020. And the total was corrected to 12 semesters of leave. Those were the changes as recorded yesterday by Tony Huntley.
Thank you for that. And I have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Jamal, who would also like to speak to the item.
Yes, I'd already communicated to the chancellor on this and I think she's already mentioned it to, perhaps to Dr. Stern. I was really interested in, I don't, Michael Angles, I don't know him, but I'm looking at his, what he's going to, intending to do on his sabbatical and it seems like it's something that could be potentially of use to Saddleback College. And looking at the reasons for students dropping after they enroll and it seems like perhaps the, the findings could be of use to us. So I assume there was some kind of, maybe there was some kind of coordination on this, but be interesting to see the findings and if they help us in our retention of students going forward.
Okay, I also have a request to speak from trustee Milchker.
Well, this is, I, I just wanted to mention, one of the sessions I went to at the professional development week was Deidre Cavazi. She's a dance chair at Saddleback College and she did a presentation on choreography and collaboration, how she in her dance sabbatical in Iceland and in Ireland collaborated with physics professors and put on, you know, interesting presentations. And then she did one back at Saddleback College after she came back and she, it's on channel 39 and she sent me a link and you could see her collaborating with a physics professor with her dance students. It's really quite fascinating. And I was just going to suggest that sometimes some of these more interesting and useful sabbatical presentations, maybe some of them, particularly this one or another one, they could come for five minutes and present what they, what they did on their sabbatical and how it will help our students. And I think that would be interesting and useful. So that's just my feeling, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.13 The Police Officers Association Master Agreement.
Board President, can I just thank Officer Beau Arbuthnot as the president of the POA? We had a very successful negotiation with a tremendous amount of respect and cleavage on both sides. So I want to thank officer Arbuthnot for his overseeing of his team and for a successful contract negotiation.
Okay. I have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Just curious, is it fun negotiating with someone who's on the other table is armed?
They do not bring their weapons into the room.
Alright, just thought of that. Alright, 6.14. SOCCCD Faculty Association Tentative Agreement, several articles there I will not read. We have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay.
May I also thank and acknowledge the work of Louis Long and his team and the district's team for eight months of negotiation on this. Both sides really worked toward the middle, there's a lot of respect on both sides. And I want to thank Louis Long for his leadership and Kurt Meyer as the president of the Faculty Association, so thank you.
Excellent. So we have a motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Jay still, and no requests to speak, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Moving on to 7.0 Reports. We have Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, any questions on that? Seeing none. Staff response to public comments from previous board meeting, none there. Facilities Plan Status Report. Report of the status of major capital projects. Any requests, questions on that? Seeing none. 7.4 Monthly Financial, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Wright, did you have it on that one?
Just a couple of comments. I was wanting, wanting to know a little bit about the stadium, how's that coming along? Is that going to be done by August?
No, it will not be done by August due to several factors, primarily because DSA was so slow in getting the plans approved. The latest recovery schedule that we've received from the contractor is that it will be ready late October, hopefully in time for the homecoming game. But that's an estimate, the rain isn't helping.
Sure.
True.
And the other thing is that the Gateway Building, I guess, has been approved or?
Yes, you just stole my thunder on my report. So yes, the, the governor has proposed that the Gateway Building be funded in the 1920 fiscal year. So we're hoping that that will stay in the budget and we'll be able to start that project beginning in the fall.
Okay, what about IVC and the fine arts?
IVC's is not on the list currently. We will be continuing to advocate both the Department of Finance and as well as our legislatures. I know that's on the list for chancellor Burke and Letitia as they're setting up meetings next week. So trustees Jamal and Milchker will be lobbying our legislatures to try to get that one on the list.
Good.
And Jay.
And Jay.
If she can talk. Okay.
Thank you.
7.4 Monthly Financial Status Report. Any requests to speak or questions? Seeing none. 7.5 Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Moving on, 7.6 Quarterly Financial Status Report. 7.7 Basic Aid Report. Alright, moving on to reports from administration governance groups, starting with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening. We are happy to be back in the spring semester. I want to thank all of the board of trustees members who came to our professional development week and again welcome our new president, Dr. Elliot Stern. Thank you.
Thank you. Faculty Association?
No report tonight, but I do want to also welcome Dr. President Elliot Stern.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate?
No report.
Alright, vice chancellor Technology and Learning Services?
No report.
Okay, vice chancellor Human Resources?
No report.
Vice chancellor Business Services, your report got stolen, so we'll move on.
Exactly, trustee Wright did a great job on explaining the budget, which is what I was going to cover, so no report.
Okay. Okay, vice chancellor Business Services? I, I just did that, sorry. See, I'm thrown off already. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate?
Hi, we actually had our first meeting of the semester that, thank you trustee Milchker and chancellor Burke for attending. And we did play a game about guided pathways, it was a lot of fun. Dr. Rockmore was the, was the moderator for it. So it was actually very enjoyable, it was about how classified or get, you know, can get involved with the different guided pathways initiatives and what part we kind of play in the grand scheme of the thing. We had professor Rebecca Kaminsky came and did a presentation on, on classified participation guided pathways. So I think all around, I got a lot of good comments and feedback from people, so they're really excited. And other than that, I wanted to point out in the chancellor's written report about the classified day, I actually have with me here Amy Hunter, who is chair of the committee that's been putting that together and they've been working really hard to kind of put together a day that I think is going to be a lot of fun for everybody who goes, so. That's all I have, thank you.
I guess we're going to go straight to Saddleback Classified Senate, who is not Darren England.
I am Jacqueline Zimbalist in for Darren tonight and I have no report, but I would like also to ditto what other people are saying, welcome Dr. Stern to the campus and we are very excited that he's here. And also I've been looking forward to seeing him tomorrow when he comes by my office in student development. Thank you.
Okay, and then last but certainly not least, CSCE president Scott Green.
One of the things that I wanted to mention was the fact that, as some people do know, I come from a small town in Pennsylvania and it's called Phoenixville. And the things that are known about Phoenixville is just a couple of things. Number one, it was one time the best independent pro football team in the entire nation in the early 1920s. One of the people that played on that team was the co-founder of my beloved Philadelphia Eagles, so I always loved that. The other thing, it was a little bit more infamous, is the fact that the Sundance Kid, Harry Longa Ball, was, he lived there. He was born in Pennsylvania, lived in my hometown. His parents and his sister were buried not far from my grandparents. But as you know, the Academy Award nominations came out today. And so the third thing is the fact that Peter Farrelly, who's from my hometown, was nominated for two Academy Awards. But that's not just the good news on my behalf. I have other good news. A former Saddleback student who also went to IVC. She took classes at IVC. She wanted to actually get into learning about cinema. So she came to Saddleback College 2011 and 2012. And her name is Raika Sitapsi. And she was nominated for an Academy Award this morning for her documentary short, Period, End of Sentence. And so we have someone from our district who was nominated for an Academy Award today. And so her movie will be shown locally next month in February during all the Academy Shorts, animation, live action and documentary locally. So we'll have a chance to be able to actually see her film and that's it.
Okay, that's excellent news, great way to finish. So someone needs to research whether this is the earliest we've ever ended with a presentation.
Don't take, I think I had 7:54 once.
Yeah, but there was no presentation. Alright, we are adjourned, have a good evening.